Good evening. At this time, there'll be reports to the Board of Education on the work done by the District Turnaround Network. The presentation is thirty minutes long, and I ask if the Board has questions, please hold up to the end of the presentation. The presentation has numerous speakers, and we want the presentation to have a smooth flow for clarity reasons. So to begin, we have Russell Robinson, who's an Educational Improvement Consultant and Channing Public Schools liaison for Wayne Regional Educational Service Agency. RISA provides a broad spectrum of services to support Wayne County's thirty-three school districts in improving student achievement, and maximizing economies of scale in staff development, purchasing, and administrative services. We're fortunate to be supported by RISA, and I present you, Mr. Robinson.
Good evening, Board of Education. Thank you, Mr. Neechai. Good evening to the guests that are here tonight, to all these esteemed educators. It's great to be, feels like being back home, although I don't really leave, I'm here a lot, so, but back home at least with you. Before we get into the presentation, we're also joined, will be joined remotely tonight by Dr. Grant Chandler, who's my Excel Executive Director of the statewide field team at Host memory marks at the end, but I know he's tuned in right now. So before we get into the presentation, I want to give you a quick brief history about this work. So back in two thousand fourteen, fifteen, I S L consultants began hearing about and being trained on this thing called the Blueprint. And at the time, it was called the Blueprint for Turnaround. It didn't take long for us to realize that this approach was really exactly what was missing in Michigan. It was this idea, this framework for helping districts and schools develop systems, a systems-level approach. Originally, called the Blueprint for Turnaround, as more and more districts began to realize the importance of building and strengthening their systems, the name was changed. It's now called the Blueprint for Systemic Reconfiguration. And you're going to see a slide in a minute that'll actually have the graphic of blueprinting one out because it was a little difficult for you to see up on the screen. So at the time that, I reintroduce by focus schools, we knew that the research at the time strongly supported the idea of systemic work in helping schools achieve, improve student achievement. And so, at some point during that school year, we invited Mr. Neechai to assemble a team, to bring a team out to Wayne RISA to hear Dr. Chandler speak and present on the Blueprint. Mr. Neechai did that, and shortly after that, I believe, Mr. Major, you were part of that group at the time. And after that, the district decided that this was really something that we should really look at, and the work began. So fast forward to where we are today, you're going to hear a lot tonight about the work that's been done. I'm like an excited father, coach, supporter of this group. You have some outstanding educators, you know, that are here in the district. They meet each week, so the first step was really developing a district network. You'll see on the slide, the graphic district network, we call it the District Turnaround Network here in Hamtramck. But they meet weekly, every Monday afternoon, really dedicated themselves to the work. So if you look at the graphic that you have in front of me, I just want to call your attention to a couple of things. This is the Blueprint for Systemic Reconfiguration. I'm going to speak briefly about it because you're going to hear a lot more in detail over the next thirty minutes. But just know that the entire Blueprint system is anchored in what we call the Outer Ring, or we call it in Hamtramck, the Foundations Group. And this is this Outer Ring that establishes a collective responsibility, that's collegial, collaborative, and professional, and grounded in a safe, orderly, respectful environment for students. And so the work centers there. You see the district network placed squarely in the center of the graphic, up at the top. That's the first step, that's the group that manages the work of the Blueprint installation. In those purple boxes at the top, you see four boxes with four distinct district systems. You're going to hear tonight about talent management, instructional infrastructure, and the Intense Student Support Network. The next ovals that come underneath are really the mechanisms, we call them the driver systems, by which we complete the work and we execute the plan for the work. So the middle one has the communications driver system, you'll hear about that, and the problem-solving driver. And then at the end of the presentation tonight, we'll talk a little bit about where we're headed next, and that involves building the last district system and also the building network. So without further ado, I'm going to turn the mic over, allow our esteemed colleagues to come up and to give some information about the Blueprint and what it's about.
The Blueprint has five levels. By the end of June, we will have completed what is called a mechanical level. The next level is a lobby level, and we've already started work in that level. During the mechanical phase, the district launches the installation of the Blueprint by establishing the urgency for district reconfiguration and building the drive. Just so you know, the driver is a district turnaround network. We have two driver systems and the ground floor of the three of the four district systems. So what we have is a district turnaround network, we call it the DTN, communications driver system, problem-solving driver, foundation components, which is the outer ring of the circle that Russ showed you earlier, instructional infrastructure, visions of high-quality instruction, talent management infrastructure, teacher principals, central office profiles, and Intense Student Support Network, vision of intense student support that is very vital in Hamtramck Public Schools. As Russ mentioned earlier, we're looking forward to the fidelity appraisal later this year by Dr. Grant Chandler, who's the Executive Director of my Excel statewide field team. And Dr. Chandler will be joining us remotely at the conclusion of this presentation for a few comments.
Good evening. First thing you're going to hear about tonight is the Communications Driver System. The Communications Committee is made up of myself, Mr. Neechai, Mr. Wilkinson, and Ms. Saint Germain. The Communication Driver System drives how we communicate with each other. It outlines how we use email, how we talk on the phone, every way we communicate with each other, with the public. The first thing we did was develop this communication protocol, cleaned up our email, how it was used, putting things in place for approvals for who can email who, large groups, so we didn't have, our email wasn't getting cluttered up, so we could really get some work done. We also set expectations in there of how we communicate with each other, how often that email is checked, how our phones are answered. And the next thing we also did was recommend the adoption of Google Apps. Everything we do in the DTN is within the Google Apps. We store all our stuff in the Drive, we're starting to use forms for all of our surveys. We use Google Docs so that we can collaborate on documents, et cetera. So there's several things that we do in the Communication Committee. We publish a monthly newsletter with updates on what's going on in the DTN to all of the staff, I believe you receive those also. Superintendent also communicates on progress on the Blueprint through his weekly board reports to you. Every year, we've had, the last few years, we've had a State of the District address, where Mr. Neechai has also communicated how we've progressed on the Blueprint. We're also looking at different ways to deliver Blueprint-related items to the staff. One of the things we're doing is pushing how we're using technology to do this. The first thing we did for a P L C meeting about a month ago was created cross-grade level collaboration tool in the Google Docs system, so that teachers at different buildings could speak, communicate with each other across the whole district at the different grade levels. We've developed a pretty, a Google Drive in a way that is easy to find all of our materials. And then the next thing we're doing is we're starting to look at how we can use Google Forms in our P L Cs, P L C time, and when we're talking about data to collect that, so that administrators can see what's going on in those meetings.
Good evening. Our next driver system is the Problem-Solving Driver System, which deals a lot about data analysis and communicating and talking about data at a scale level throughout the district. So data is obviously a very big part of, it's really at the center of the decisions that we make to continue to move our district forward, to identify our strengths and the areas that need further support. The Problem-Solving Driver System, so the tool that you're looking at in the slide there, it's the tool that we've adopted as a district to drive that data process. The process is uniform throughout the district. It started about eighteen months ago, where we've had data conversations at departmental levels, grade levels, building levels, through monitoring, process monitoring. We've adopted the form, the tool that we use, to a more clear, concise form, which is what you're looking at on the slide here.
Good evening, we're the Foundations Committee. So as it was pointed out at the beginning of the PowerPoint, the Outer Rim, or the Outer Circle that holds the entire Blueprint together, is where the foundation components are located. These components are anchored in a culture of responsibility, that is a culture that is collegial, collaborative, and professional, and a culture which is grounded in a safe, orderly, and respectful environment for all students. Back during the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen school year, the Foundations Committee conducted perception surveys of the entire Hamtramck Public School staff. The surveys attempted to gauge the level of staff readiness in the areas of collective responsibility and developing a safe environment. After analyzing the data and the feedback from the staff, the committee identified areas of focus for the next school year, including the need for professional learning to better equip teachers or staff with necessary skills to reach and teach students living in poverty.
So our committee's response to the survey is to develop a district-wide professional development program, which will be titled Change in Minds to Address Poverty in the Classroom. This will be a district-wide program, this will be conducted during P L C time, which is an online program, which will consist of twelve modules. And there's strategies in each module, and it will ask each teacher to select one intervention, create an action plan, conduct that in the classroom, and provide feedback at the next P L C meetings that they do have. The nice thing about this, teachers will receive eleven continuing educational credits, at no cost to the district or no cost to themselves. And we also, our committee and DTN would like to invite the Board to visit the website. Ashley, it's michiganvirtual.org. And feel free to review it, or you can go through the training. All you have to do is create a username and password, and then they will have a list of all the classes there.
So included in your packet, there is information about Carol Druckwetz's research on growth and fixed mindset, and that is what this virtual program is based on. Ms. Ahmed also included a survey for you to take on your own free time, if you'd like to participate in this, about growth and fixed mindset. On the next slide, what you'll see is our plan going forward, how we are going to deliver these modules to the teachers. So as you can see, they will work monthly on modules, so at the beginning of the month, they will participate in a module. And during that time, they'll be working with their teammates, they'll view it, and they will complete an action plan, which they will enact over the course of the month. At the last P L C meeting of the month, we have those weekly, they will come back together and talk about how that action plan went. And all of those action plans are based on responding to students in poverty in the classroom. And it's really, the team has been through this, these modules, and it's really going to be a powerful program for our teachers to experience.
So our committee has worked with many groups in the district that are dedicated to strengthening school culture, school culture, and climate, and curriculum, and instruction. And those groups are listed here. And we do this again to build a stronger foundation to ensure continued student success.
Next team up is going to be Instructional Infrastructure. And we are really the district system that ensures that we have a guaranteed and viable curriculum for every student in our district from grades pre-take through twelve. This system makes, works to make sure that the curriculum is in place, but not only that, that we're monitoring it and making sure that it is adjusted when needed to fit the needs of our students and our teachers. This is really a three-step process. The first step is really, we spend a lot of time creating our vision of high-quality instruction, and that really translates to what we believe about each subject and how students will engage with those subjects. Step two is actually installing the curriculum and assessment components. And this is really focused on what students will learn, when they will learn it, and the materials needed. An important component to mention about this step is assessment. So we have a clear plan to know what students know, what they've learned, and how they're actually applying that content that was taught. And step three for the Instructional Improvement Network is this is really grounded in the work about how we will assist our teachers and school leaders in sharpening their instruction. And these, all of these steps are really a collaborative process, and we've begun a new approach to engage various stakeholders. We can't do this work without teachers.
In order to do this work, we had to create a structure of district curriculum teams. And that has been an absolutely wonderful experience, and many, many teachers are involved. Thirty, forty teachers all told so far have had input into our decisions. We have a K-six literacy curriculum, we have a seven-twelve curriculum, we have a mathematics K-twelve district committee, and we also have a cultural competence council, because one of our key goals is to integrate cultural responsiveness to all curriculum.
For the development of the vision adoption for E L A math, the goal of the vision is having students learn by using research-based strategies from the National Council of English and Mathematics. Students will be able to conceptualize learning and use inquiry-based, higher-order thinking for both math and E L A.
So step two is curriculum assessment. So the Curriculum Leadership Councils, or C L Cs, were developed. The C L C teams have used a collaborative constructivist model to develop curriculum and instruction for the district. The councils are comprised of teachers, interventionists, Wayne RISA experts, and Wayne RISA experts. During the C L C meetings, research has focused on best practices in content instruction, along with writing curriculum maps and units. The C L C work has been anchored in research, cultural responsive teaching, the multi-tiered system of supports, and interventions for our struggling peers. So the elementary K-six English Language Arts C L C team is focused on the adoption and implementation of M A S A units for both reading and writing, the adoption and implementation of Words to the Language, which is a phonics program to help all of our students, incorporating mentor texts to read aloud during readers' and writers' workshop, and finally, the development of a balanced assessment plan and calendar that incorporates not just the district benchmarks of reading and writing, but also the state assessments such as the H S T A.
I'm very excited to share some of the things that we've been doing in terms of our professional learning support, the E L A curriculum rollout. So this past summer, fifty teachers attended our district-level trainings over the summer voluntarily. We had teachers attend a M A S A conference, which is the, which is the, the system of professional development by M A S A that helps the districts with their rollout of the E L A units, reading and writing workshop. One thing that we've also really started to hone in on this year is our staff surveys after each P D experience. We've really started to look at that data and help, that helps us guide our future work. Important note too is that we used one P D day this school year for cross-building grade level teams, so each grade level met with all of their peers for all the elementary schools across the district. And after that survey, a hundred percent of our teachers that responded agreed that that time was very, very valuable to them. So I think that's very important. And then our C L Cs are really, really leading this work. They're reviewing the P D surveys, and we get them back. And now we're actually starting our pacing guides for elementary schools for the fall. And one final note is that we're starting to lay the foundation for step three and of this process, and it's really our instructional leadership practicum. All the elementary school principals have been meeting and doing learning walks through each one of our elementary schools together. So we've been norming our instructional engines and also doing fidelity curriculum checks on the curriculum as we've been rolling it out.
Just an update on the secondary, what we've been doing. We have also adopted the reading/writing workshop, and that is an inquiry-based, we want kids to construct their own meaning. Instead of sitting and get, we're going to have them get excited about learning. In order to do that, we have to have students read more. At the adolescent level, reading goes down, frankly, the minutes, the number of minutes most kids read voluntarily is very small. Maybe on the phone, some things, but anything academic, not so. So we're really working on a choice reading program, going to really enrich our libraries with choice reading. We're going to embed a lot more cultural identities into our books for choice reading. We're going to have them do some journaling because we need more writing fluency. We're also working on grammar and language progressions across K-twelve. Frankly, that is a low area in our data, so we really do need to do more with that. We're evaluating units, we're using E Q I P, a system to evaluate the units, to make sure everything is aligned to the standards. And we are ready to adopt an E L A textbook, which we haven't had in, I don't know how many years, somebody said ten, fifteen years. So we have a new, very exciting adoption. We worked with a vendor, and it was vetted by teachers. Thank you.
For math curriculum, maths, and units, the C L C team has been working very hard with math talk and tests, so it may be implemented next year for the two thousand eighteen, nineteen school year. The goal is to have students better understand math through writing, explaining, and having dialogue, or verbalizing of the math process, while challenging students with rigor. Students will grow their critical thinking skills as well as better understand the math process.
And the last thing we're going to be speaking to is the next steps. We have three big steps for next school year that are going, oh, I'm sorry, I will work on those. The secondary, the seven-ten team are writing the units right now, that's where we're at right now for Algebra I, II, and Geometry. Those units, we hope, they're not done yet, we hope they have some more writing teams in the summer, but we're hoping to roll out the completion of those three major mathematic areas. They will include math talks as well and math tasks. Okay, next one. The last steps that we have for our curriculum for next year is to adopt a new science district committee, a new social studies district committee, and also to do a lot more monitoring of what we've done this past year. I know elementary and secondary will be doing that. We're adopting these new materials, we'll be monitoring everything. We won't continue with anything that isn't working, we absolutely are not going to do that. We're also embedding much more cultural competence and responsive training into our curriculum and P D for next year.
Good evening. For over the past year, I've had the pleasure of working with Ms. Lesiski, Mr. Veronica, and Mr. Miller. We have been the Talent Management Team. And our main concern has been with finding, identifying, and keeping staff that, you know, suits the needs of our district. We have three steps that we have been following. The first step is recruitment, hiring, and assignment. Our, we have intentional efforts, our, I'm going to recruit high-quality teacher candidates to H P S through job fairs, targeted advertising, and closely monitoring electronic application systems for Wayne County. Step two is evaluation, and we're using the Danielson Model with our teachers. And we do this through, we have announced visits in the classroom, we have unannounced visits in the classrooms, we have walkthroughs, we have look-for's, the teachers do self-assessments. And we kind of look at that all at the end of the year and try to figure out what is the best professional development based on the needs of our staff for the upcoming year, and make sure that our staff is in the proper placement to help the district. The last step is retention and removal. We don't like to have to remove anybody, our intent is really to grow and support the staff that we have, but occasionally, removal might be necessary. Mr. Veronica and Mr. Miller are going to talk to you a little bit about the nineteen competencies that we've been talking about and working on, and also the hiring process.
So the document on the next slide here, the turnaround teacher profile is a, it's extremely, it's a really important tool within the talent management process. The teacher turnaround profile consists of nineteen attributes, research-based attributes that my Excel came up with, that consist of a turnaround, highly effective teacher. That's going to help kind of drive the work that we do in the direction that we want to go. Our group, what we did is, we spent a lot of time unpacking the nineteen attributes on that form to really give explicit, specific examples, detailed strategies, to try to kind of bring the document to life to help produce, I guess, a living document that will help teachers understand what exactly a turnaround teacher looks like. We, I think our district is one of the only districts that we know of that's unpacked the document. So the document that we've created is being used by other districts around Wayne County, so we're proud of that work. And we use this document here for pretty much two different purposes. The first thing is, it's used in the hiring process. All DTN members have been trained in the hiring process. We're all very familiar with the turnaround competencies, and we use that to rate our candidates, to evaluate their strengths, and if they are hired, areas that they still will need support in. The second area that this turnaround teacher profile is used, it's developed an inventory for our teachers throughout the, throughout the district. So every teacher has self-rated their own abilities and skills in each of these nineteen areas. So we've built an inventory with everyone's self-ratings, which has helped us as a district determine what our district strengths are and what areas we need for their support and professional development in. The next slide, you're looking at pretty much the same thing, but instead of a teacher turnaround profile, we're looking at principal turnaround profile, the central office turnaround profile. Our group is working on unpacking those as we speak, we have not finished that work yet. But our principals have gone through the inventory process, just like teachers have. So we've all self-reflected and self-rated ourselves in the principal competencies. We've all met with Mr. Neechai and had a conversation about areas that we feel we have strengths in, areas that we could use further support in. And that's, those, similar to the teacher competencies, the principal competencies are used for hiring future administrators, future central office, district leaders. And that's the process that Myron Miller is going to talk about, which is the hiring process.
So selecting a turnaround teacher or leader, we adopted this process along with the two, what are three profiles? The teacher profile and the, this, the teacher, the teacher profile, the principal profile, and the central office profile in order to guide our decisions on who we hire for our district. There's a seven-step process for all of the hiring needs for certified staff. We start with the candidate screener, so the applicants, they apply on after-track, and either H R or one of the team members that's hiring or interviewing. We look through the application to make sure it's complete, and we look for specific components, such as certification, and when they expire or when they're going to renew, or things like that. We start off with a virtual screening, a phone call, which takes between fifteen, twenty minutes. We talk and discuss some things with the candidate before we actually invite them for step three, the technical interview. During that interview, all the DTN members that have been, that have been trained, most of us have been trained through the process, we actually sit down and we actually interview those candidates. The fourth step is the performance task. It could be anywhere from a lesson, a day-to-day, or they can actually, if it's an administrator, usually we'll have a situation where they'll either watch a video, or during the summer, we had summer school, so they actually watched a summer school lesson, and then we had a discussion on them basically evaluating the lesson. The next one is the behavior, the behavior event interview, or you might hear B E I. And that's another step in the process for us to dig a little deeper and understand who are we possibly going to hire. The sixth step is a fit to school. So just like Mr. Veronica was speaking about those profiles and how we've been basically inventorying our strengths and some of the areas of growth in our district, we try to find the best candidate for the specific school need. So that's the fit to school, and then the background check. The last part of the process is the, basically the job offer from Mr. Neechai. So we actually submit the names to Mr. Neechai, and he calls the candidate and discusses those needs.
We know that many of our students come to school every single day with academic and non-academic roadblocks. The purpose of the Intense Student Support Network is to create, implement, and support the needs of all students at a high level. The three steps are, one, create a vision of high-quality student support; two, meet the social, emotional, and health needs of all the students; and three, create a system of network delivery. Currently, we have adopted the vision, and we are working on an implementation plan.
Good evening. H P S actually has adopted the norms of pastoral care that include components of care, support, membership, and safety. Our network will work to systematically collect data on the non-academic needs of the students and work to, excuse me, put systems in place at scale across the district to address these needs while also promoting positive relationships among the staff and students, as well as encouraging families and community members to be a part of these efforts.
We have already started to collect, we've already started to collect data at each of the elementary schools with a focus group of the students. The Student Support Network realizes that for the students to achieve high level of academic achievement, that their emotional needs can't be ignored. The students were asked questions- The students were asked questions on how they perceived how their current teachers felt about them. The questions were asked by a separate trusted staff member of their school, and the Student Support Network is currently collecting and aggregating the data from those surveys, and will use that data to help guide our work on the path to creating a system of support for the students and families in Hantramic, so that we can achieve our mission of making every student and family feel supported and connected to the Hantramic family.
So lots taking place, huh? And that's, as Mr. Nichei mentioned, the work that's mechanical. So you have a graphic in front of you. So the next level, we're hoping to finish, as Mr. Nichei mentioned, the fidelity assessment appraisal this year, which will be really just an indicator that the work that we've undergone this year and what we've done is really in line with the standards that are created in the blueprint. We've dabbled a little bit, as someone mentioned, in the lobby level, so in this next level of installation, we really begin to build this fourth district system that you see in the top, the fourth box, called Leadership Network. And what that will do, all the work we've done so far, as you listen to people talk, really, we're building the district-level systems that we need in order to allow buildings to be able to flourish, right? So all of the systems, building a guaranteed viable curriculum, the talent management piece, the student support piece, now we need to actually get this work down into the buildings. So the first step is creating a leadership network. This is a process whereby central office members, central office administrators, are tasked with partnering, being a true partner, with each building principal, and meeting with them weekly for the purposes of visiting classrooms, looking at evidence of high-quality instruction, developing plans to help grow and support teachers. You heard a lot during talent management about, you know, making sure that we're thinking about the highest quality practices for hiring. The reality is, in any given year, we probably hire eight to ten teachers maybe in Hantramic, but we have three hundred and fifty that we want to help grow and support, take them from wherever they are to the next step. And so the real mission of that network is to take all the data, the things they talked about, to develop these partnerships that are going to happen next year, to make sure that we're seeing the results from the curriculum and the other pieces, the professional learning, those things that have been developed. So Leadership Network is the last district system to be built. We will also build the last driver system. So in the center of your graphic, those blue ovals, you see the performance management driver. We started this year with one component of that, which was really, if you remember back a few more meetings ago, I believe Mr. Nichei gave you what he called a report card, and it was this blueprint installation tracking tool that sort of said where we self-assessed ourselves, where the DTN felt we were. We had some areas that we felt we had slipped a little bit, so we kind of re-kicked those things back into gear. So that's one component of performance management. The other component is where we really look at building level performance tools. So the district will make decisions about what data we're going to use. We're going to collect instructional and non-instructional data, and we're going to be meeting monthly. So not just when step comes out, but every month, bringing principals together to say, what's working? What's our attendance rate? What's our discipline rate? Do we have truancy? Do we have tardy issues? What's our, what's happening with our curriculum? Are students performing on the assessments like we'd like them to? So that's a performance management system that happens monthly. And then the last piece is we really take this work to the building level, where we build what's called building turnaround networks, or on your graphic, you see building networks. And there are some very specific routines that we'll undergo with our principals to help them now really leverage all of those district systems you've heard about tonight. So lots of exciting things to come. I can't be more proud of the group of people that's behind me, that I have the fortune of working with. And Sharon underscored this a little bit, I think this is really worth saying, and I especially want to say it in front of Dr. Chandler. I asked, or I think Laura asked, I asked Laura to ask their support staff to find out how many teachers are involved in this process at the mechanical level. So in many districts, they assemble a district network, and the district network kind of does all the work. They vet divisions, they approve divisions, they develop the curriculum. We added up a total number of people, it's more than one hundred employees at the Hantramic Public Schools, that are either involved in the Curriculum Leadership Councils for elementary ELA, secondary ELA, math K-12, the cultural competence group, or the DTN, or PBIS. So those major components, more than a hundred people, employees of the district have been invested in this work in some way, shape, or form over the last year, year and a half, two years, and that's really remarkable. So with that, and a thank you, I think we have Dr. Chandler, and I think that he'd like to take just a second to address you as well.
So I have, I've been sitting in the back here virtually, listening to your board meeting and to this amazing presentation. Do y'all think we're okay?
Yes.
So I was just going to take a couple of minutes so that your board meeting doesn't go forever, but I have to tell you, I am the executive director of the statewide field team, and I'm the co-author of this blueprint. And so to sit back and listen to your district turnaround network members talk so eloquently about the work that they are doing is really, really exciting. So I am really, really proud of the work that is happening in Hantramic. To listen to all of it is already in place, and to hear them talk about so intelligently what it is they're trying to do, and why they're trying to do it, and how all the pieces fit together. We don't hear that in very many places. So, you know, I want to compliment, I want to compliment your team. I want to compliment Russ Robinson, who I've been working with since the blueprint was ruled out in the state of Michigan, and so compliment him and Wayne Reeser for all of the support that they are giving as well. This work, this idea of dramatically disrupting the traditional way of going about educating students and putting systems of support in place for teaching and learning, so that we can be successful for each and every student, is relatively new to the state of Michigan, and it is taking Michigan by storm. When Russ started working with me in this, there were nine districts that were brave and said, what is this thing that you're talking about? We now have over a hundred school districts like Hantramic that are engaged in this work. And the weird changes in how districts operate, and that impact on student achievement across the state. So I, again, could not be prouder of the work that you are doing in Hantramic, and we are absolutely here to support you every step of the way, both from Wayne Reeser and from the statewide field team. We are continuously looking at ways that we can support you and the work that you are doing. So Russ knows exactly all of those things that he can ask us to do if Hantramic needs some additional support, and we are more than happy to provide that. I look forward to coming in person to the district and conducting the fidelity appraisal, if that is what Dr. Nichei would like me to do. And the fidelity appraisal compares the theoretical, the expected home district we're doing at this level of installation compared to what it is that you are doing in Hantramic. And then we provide a report and recommendations, and it's a great way to affirm the great work that is happening. We are continually launching additional supports all over, all over Michigan, and I want to encourage Hantramic to participate in the board series. One of the things that we are seeing all over the state is the power of this support from board members and from the board as a whole. And as a result of that, we have launched a blueprint board member series. One of them is a week, a week from Friday in Lansing, and we're going to repeat that series in the fall and in the winter of next year. So we hope that you will also think about participating in that board series as well. There's lots I could talk about, but it'd probably be easier to do in person, perhaps when we do the fidelity appraisal, but I have to tell you, having been able to listen to your entire presentation, I am so incredibly proud of the work that you are doing, and I hope that you are as proud of your district as I am. And if you have any questions or comments, I'd be certainly happy to answer them at this time.
Oh my goodness, save him for when he comes in first.
Yes, I'll point to questions for you when you're here, you're beautiful in Hantramic.
Fantastic, I look forward to it, I can't wait for the invite.
Thank you, Dr. Chandler.
Have a great rest of your evening.